Trustee Paul X. Here. Trustee Missner.
Yeah.
Trustee Villalobos.
Yeah.
Trustee Underdog.
Here.
Trustee Lubin.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Here. Uh, pursuant to the village board's sufficiently adopted public time of course, because we're gonna have our regular meeting later tonight. Um, we're not gonna have a public topic, uh, about public issues, meaning tonight is at seven. If you have a topic on an agenda, I included on tonight's committee, the whole agenda, I'll ask you to make the comments when we get to that. And the appropriate time of all times related to agenda, I have three events and I'll, uh, alert the speaker around their time zone. So that takes us to our agenda tonight. We're gonna have reports from a number of our boards, commissions, committees. Um, let me say at the start that the village depends on volunteers, the village board, we're all volunteers, some people say it will work. Um, but all of our, we really depend on our volunteers. Um, and so I'm saying now of grateful. Uh, be our ability to build is greater of here service. With that, uh, let's start with review discussion of the twenty twenty four Public Safety Commission annual reports. And I'll ask the chair of our Public Safety Commission, Judge Amy St. Eve, and staff of the ASI, the director. Yeah. Uh, so we are approving that the village mall as we speak are, uh, why I have a visual because we know that it's been bad for years. Uh, it's not great here. I tried to watch one of our meetings from far. And it was like, um, signal the rain, people on was turning their hands in my phone. So for the benefit of our, I don't think it's much, much, much lean on the microphone.
That will try to do that. Um, but good evening, everybody. My name is Amy St. Eve along with Dan Rubenstein and Andrew Quinn. We are the Public Safety Commission. I am the chair of the commission and we have good news report from twenty twenty four. We were busy in twenty twenty four, the commission that eight separate times. And within our interview, we brought the examinations and conducted the examinations for entry level public safety officers and one of the principal promotions. So during those eight sessions, we interviewed a lot of candidates, a total of thirty seven individuals. Twenty of those were for entry level positions. Seven thirteen of those were ladders who would come over to entry level position. To be a lateral, you have to have two years of law enforcement experience or fire writing experience somewhere else. And then four candidates for promotion to lieutenant. During the twenty four period, we promoted one interim candidate to lieutenant. And we hired three public safety officers. The lateral, I wanted to say a few things about the lateral process. I've been on the commission for a while and we previously did not have the lateral process and it has been a great process, especially around twenty twenty with, uh, because being a law enforcement officer was, there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm for that. We ended up getting some great candidates and continued to get some great candidates latterly. Uh, we're still getting good candidates for entry levels as well, but we, the lateral process has, has worked really well and has helped the public safety department get quality individuals in or ready to hit the ground running. Uh, I also want to add that this happened in twenty twenty three, but in the fall of twenty twenty three, we hired a new chief. You get a village president and chief Sean Lovren and he has done wonders for the public safety department. The great choice. Uh, he and deputy chief early are doing a fabulous job of working it. I have seen the change in morale, the change in attitude. He has brought in just a fresh source of energy, uh, not just because of all the coffee he trains during the day, uh, fresh source of energy to the department. The officers are the great candidates. So, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank P D R keeping us all in line with the secretary of the commission. So thank you for all you two for busting mine. Uh, I am very comfortable saying that the public safety department is good here.
Uh, thanks for that report. Uh, agree with you about the public safety department. Agree with you on our new public safety director. We've seen the same thing. We agree with you on the lateral thing. I'm not sure I'm supposed to say this out loud, but I'm about to. One of the things that's happened as a result of laterals is to bring in officers from other departments. And they've got different experiences than getting in Glencoe and they tell the other Glencoe public safety officers, uh, how good it is here and that helps. Uh, and of course, we were hard to make it good here. Uh, Judge, thank you for your years of service. Thank, uh, Andrew with Dan for their years of service. There was a time, I remember at my partners, who was on Public Safety Commission many years ago. It was an easy job. Zillions of people wanted this job. They were fighting to the nail to get it. It is become harder, not just in Glencoe, but everywhere. And you know how lucky we are that three of you worked so hard to get us where we are. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
That is your one question.
Sure.
Yet one thing that we could potentially work on. So very quick, and we might consider working on this as a public safety institute.
I think the, the new director has been working on that over the last year. Morale was down. Uh, I could hear it from officers who I've been talking to, morale was down pretty far. I think they've done a great job of working on morale and that has helped and gone a whole way. To, uh, President Rhodes' point, when we interview ladders from other departments, first question we always ask them is, why do you want to be a Glencoe safety officer? And nine out of ten times they say, oh, well, I've spoken with your officers or I'm friends with one of your officers and we hear what a great place it is. So I bet change in morale has been a great.
Great. Thank you.
Um, with cybercrime on the, you know, on the rise, um, do you specifically look for some people without those skills to deal with cybercrime?
We do not specifically look for people with that, but we ask about experience, especially those coming latterly. We ask about experience and they always have their certifications on either on their resume or somewhere in their application. So we do look at that and ask about specific certifications that they have at various areas. I, I completely agree with you about cybercrime. I see it in my, in my day job.
Thank you.
Okay. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next report is a reviewing discussion of the twenty twenty four Glencoe Council of Recursion Annual Report. And I'll ask, uh, Chair Rock the Boost, and our staff, the A S I, the director, present.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Uh, well, as I go to me and Dr. Anthony, I am the chair of the council. I'm sorry, we're at the Council of Recursion Meeting. Those that don't know us, feel bad if any people don't, even though we've been around for a price of time. The Council of Recursion Committee are changed over from its former community relations form. In two thousand twenty one, after the longstanding constraint of similarly aligned mission predates, the council was created in recognition of the village's commitment to prospering and maintaining a strong sense of community and so down to the value of diversity and inclusion that might be committed. And for the rest of the purpose that the council was dedicated to the village's public policy against discrimination, bigotry, bias, or hate in any form, and encourages mutual respect, cooperation, tolerance, and understanding among those who live, work, visit, or do business in the village. Uh, for the year of two thousand and twenty four, we did meet a lot of times. We established, we have some communities working to, wanting to develop and assist with projects throughout the community. We meet the first one year every month. We are strictly voluntarily organized members of the community. And some of the things that we've done in twenty twenty four was supporting community events. We developed a list of existing community partnerships, including that writer's theater, the library. Uh, we also assisted with the community care bags initiative that was organized with the Glencoe Union Church. Uh, we co-sponsored the Black History Movement, the Black Historical Society, and the Woods Library Club. We provided volunteer support and promotion of community related library events, including private initiatives. Uh, we also provided volunteer support and promotion of the writers' theater events, including Drag Story Hour. Part of our, uh, initiatives and options was supporting village events and promoting the welcoming and inclusive community pledge. So examples of the Fourth of July celebration, providing interactive kids for, I'm sorry, interactive games for young children and their parents. We also participated in the Glencoe Sidewalk, so provided donations and pride flags. Uh, another great lesson there that these donations do not hold up well in the warm weather. They are sugarized oil holes, but less than murder, you know. Uh, through the T T truck event, we were there handing out water and snacks. We were incredibly popular for handing out the free water. That was a wonderful event and there's a lot of kids, a lot of attention and I got to know the, uh, workers of the Glencoe, ex-malice, the new trucks and putting there. You didn't know the, uh, handprints, we were still not. At the light of lights event, we provided a sensory room and working with the village to listen to post feedback. That sensory room was in the public library and if you guys were there, it was incredibly cold. So the library was a very top spot that night. But the points of the sensory room is to provide a safe space or a space for them that are sensory overwhelmed issues and it gives them a break from the chaos that can be that of there. Uh, we also created communication bank, social media content. We are, um, well, we just currently, but we did approve a getting to know her of Glencoe article. Uh, one of our volunteer members does do an introductory article. Um, uh, usually focusing someone within the community will be a, a, we hire in the village government, a business owner. Whole point of that is that people in the village gets to know someone else in the community through this article. We did also get out, posted a community trivia night, uh, that went over very well, but you'd like to do that again. We coordinated a hat and glove drive that was launched the same night as Light the Lights. The title was impeccable because it was so cool. People appreciated it better, collecting cats, those people that. Um, those hats and gloves were distributed to local charitable organizations. And, uh, it was a very, very great turnout on top of the Toys R' Us program that was also which all and another charity event. So we were very happy to do that. Um. I am the officer, Rock the Boost, uh, who is kind of entrusted to serve as the board liaison. We do have several volunteers. But we do have, um, one, a member who might be renewing her current role. But overall, we are confident in the progression that we made. We hope to continue making progress and we hope to continue pushing the village's message, message that is invited, welcoming and friendly.
Have you, uh, got any questions or comments for the C I C? Trustee Arden, question?
I have four questions today. Um, and our strategic plan, we talked about onboarding new residents and we would look forward to your input from your commission as to how we can do that, maybe a better job. Um, so many of our people work outside the community and it's be helpful to see what we could do to help them understand the great resources we have here in the community.
I completely agree. Um, that is why it's important for us to continue to attend these public events. Sidewalk sale was a phenomenal opportunity to interact with the community, introduce ourselves, tell them what we're about and who we are. Same with the T T truck event and same with the Fourth of July. Um, it was, and it still is a challenge to have residents or visitors know who we are. We meet once a month. It's voluntary and it's a five period. Sometimes people work until six, seven, five to nine, they end with their meetings. So by us keeping up with our pledge to attend public events, speak with the community, we are putting ourselves out there and talking new members or possible people that are just visiting on those days of the sidewalks, yeah, to who we are. Most recently, we participated in the family belonging event at the, uh, at Central School. We had a banner up. It was Hillary, myself, and another member of mine. And our entire interacting was asking the kids what do they want at Glencoe? And a side of a water park and I exchanged shot and another part of the world was an outdoor, outdoor park, which I couldn't understand because of all the parts that we have. But it was definitely an opportunity for us to engage in a smaller audience, current students of our, our school district, but also ask their parents. So for us, it was the second way to be able to talk to the kids, but also casually talk to the parents. Some of them didn't know who we were. Great opportunity for us to, to introduce ourselves, invite them to our meetings and to get involved with these switches.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, thank you for that report. The Hillary keeps us updated what the council is up to. So we know what, you know, spread out over here, uh, your report made it clear that you're doing a lot uh, throughout the year. We are grateful. Please pass it on to each of the members of the council, how great that we are proud to have this. Glencoe's had like before the council for a long time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Uh, next report is a reviewing discussion of the twenty twenty four State of the Building Task Force Annual Report. Um, that, that's the state of the task force, uh, chair Brad Upson, vice chair, or retirement and our staff, the A S I, the director, will protect. So take it away.
Thank you. Appreciate the convenience tonight. Uh, I think we're one of the older commissioners here and we're pretty active over the years. Uh, twenty twenty four is a pretty good year for us. Uh, I would say our committee always thinks we don't do enough, but uh, I think what we do look at, what we have accomplished to meet our goals of, you know, promoting sustainability in the village, encouraging varieties of solid practices and moving this, uh, forward, I'd say, you know, biggest accomplishment that involved Glencoe. The last comprehensive report for sustainability was mentioned various things and this year's all Glencoe, you're not a big idea too. Uh, so I think that was a lot of work that took a lot of energy, pointing to three and four. Um, we, we went forward the other day, I should not, it's all been great. Uh, waste not to Glencoe having a, uh, hopeful, uh, hip of service, which I think has done well. I think last time we had the president or our president like that to be hired, but I think as compared to, uh, what was with L R Aspen was the seasonal pickup. I think that is moving in the right direction. Um, we continue to do the annual D O B recycle day, which is getting coming up, uh, at the end of May. Cause you know, every year has increased. I think last year we got two hundred forty seven cars, which is, you know, pretty good return. Uh, the, uh, one of the bigger things that we started last year, we're going to pizza share. Uh, which was an idea of my, uh, co-chair was, um, we gave, uh, two thousand usable bags in order for exchange. Which I never thought about, but they give out two thousand bags in what we get. Uh, to, uh, a lot of last event. Uh, we have Jeff is taking the lead on it. The, uh, E V readiness program, the dark rate, so the destination. We put one or two community presence. So a lot of work went to Jeff getting this done and I think that's also reflected in uh, the E V vehicles the village has been purchasing. Police chief has one, we've got, you know, the village, maybe forty E V vehicles now, please to, we're getting more.
We have six.
Seven. So.
Seven.
Uh, you know, that is a big accomplishment. Um, the stargazing event with the golf course, uh, which is now we did our second year is very well attended. Um, most recently, just two nights ago, we participated with the uh, District Thirty Five West School, um, garden event, which was very well attended. We got a table there. Um, as we move into twenty twenty five, um, we are been always a big proponent of and glad it's all passing this community. And the board is working with the village to develop, you know, ideas for home, the trust that plastic bags is something that we're looking at to see how we can make that work for our community, working with, uh, staff. I think another big issue that we could work with is to integrate with staff and say that if you made great projects this year, Monica becoming regular to our meetings, uh, we've been meeting with Phil and I think that has been something um, we would like to do though because evidently trustees have to go with this action. We would like this this and especially if we do this, we know that guys, uh, actively working on Phil's part. Um, and, you know, it's with the lawyers and so that's a great step in the first direction. Hopefully it will give us a template how moving forward for other ordinances and things to, that we want to support the community will give us a path forward to see what we need to make that happen. Um, this year, the village is instituting, uh, recycle coach and they're gonna help support that. Um, preparing for our, your, your trade with the next year. Um, and but that's always a big issue and we'll build it, she put in, uh, twice, uh, year pickups, which are to continue to note that. Uh, Monica said the first year was success. That we're, that's gonna be repeated again in the fall. Um, and what, you know, money that you're given by the village will be used for as fast. We use postcards to educate it and know the other ideas, uh, for the village and putting the tree commissions, they get off from the ground this year and, uh, hopefully help you bolster that.
Thanks for that report. Trustees have any questions for the chair or question chair of the S T F? If not, let, let me say, um, we are grateful for what guys could, we are, even if you don't think you can tell, we are totally listening to what you say. And, uh, you've moved us, uh, in the right direction here. And, and we encourage you to keep leading us to look for a sustainable way to do things we reckon we get at some point. Um, I'm not blaming anyone. Two years ago, I went to, uh, meetings, one of the initiatives was to get the village, the village staff to do sustainable stuff like electric cars. You know, now, you know, I'm gonna die because our electric car might need something different than it, uh, two years ago. Uh, so we don't blame you for that. Thank you for your hard work. Keep it up. Pass it on to your, uh, personal grateful B R for what you're doing for our.
Thanks. Just, Mr. Ron, I was just gonna mention, I know they're working on the sustainability action plan, R P, which is out on the street. This is gonna be something that, uh, this body will be talking about on with the S T F in, uh, the coming few months. And, uh, is really the result of recommendations that the S T F made to the village board last year. Um, so there are resources budgeted in the twenty twenty five budget. It may be in overlap into twenty two and six, depending upon the duration of the work of that man, but this is something that has long been an initiative that the S T F has advocated for. Um, in addition to things like, uh, the, the work that has been done to enhance, uh, composting and enhance electric vehicle usage. We are also, you know, just, just because I think it's worth mentioning along with the annual report, uh, gonna be installing several new electric car charging stations outside of the village hall to help to support our own fleet, but also to be made available to the general public, um, uh, for their use. I never can remember the difference between the, uh, fast chargers and regular chargers. But one of them is gonna be a fast charger. Um, and again, those will be made available to the, to the general public. There are a lot of electric cars in Glencoe, um, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty percent of the registered vehicles in the community. So this is a, this is a community that's kind of an early and, uh, like a doctor of that type of technology. And so that, uh, effort that the S T F has, has encouraged the village, uh, to undertake with our, our fleet um, is something that is more representative of how our residents own, uh, vehicle usage and purchasing. Um, it is in place as well. So just a couple of points I wanted to underscore, uh, what, what Brad and Maury shared tonight. And the S T F's really not going out of the park. It's almost ten years old. Um, it'll be, I guess it's almost nine years old. Actually, I think it was April of twenty sixteen that the, uh, the S T F was formally created. So this is your anniversary.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Uh, the last of the reports is the viewing discussion of the twenty twenty four Tree Commission Annual. Um, that, this, 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 uh, it's, uh, it's gonna be the, the chair.
I can do it from here. Okay.
From also, and our staff, the A S I, our public works, uh, who are concerned. And I see that we have at least one of our members of the tree commission. When we started with the tree commission, it was not clear that it was gonna be a big deal. It's turned out to be, because I think you know, if we're gonna get this report, it's turned out to be important in terms of how we can change our policy to protect and enhance our trees. So, um, Trustee Arden, good luck.
Thank you. Um, we are the newest and smallest commission in the village, the smallest one. Um, many people refer to Glencoe as a leaping community. I was gathering in the loop the other day and some is, oh, you live in that leaping community near the lake. And, uh, that's because we have such a wonderful tree canopy. Surveys reveal that our residents highly value the trees in the village. Our trees provide many benefits, including sequestering carbon, cleaning air, saving energy, providing beauty and value and cooling, rainwater capture, mental and physical health, and wildlife habitat. Our trees are really part of our community infrastructure. They're just like water, sewer, uh, and streets. They're part of what really makes this community work and makes it a wonderful place to live. And you see this slide up there, just again reinforcing why I'm doing this and benefits to the community of for having our wonderful tree canopy. Can I have the next slide, please? Thank you. A little bit about the community. We have over eleven thousand trees, uh, tree inventory. Approximately fifty five percent of the tree canopy, uh, coverage through the village. So we are definitely a leaping community. Again, it's a critical part of our stormwater infrastructure. And one tree can absorb between fifty to a hundred and fifty gallons of water every day. So that's what, uh, we plantar types call green infrastructure. And so it's an important part of the community. The role of the tree commission is to promote public outreach and welcome, we welcome public input on tree related issues, allowing residents in Glencoe to take ownership of this important and beneficial resource. What I'd like to do now is talk for a moment about tree commissioners. What I'd like to do now is talk for a moment about the tree commissioners. Of course, I'm chair of the commission, Brian Lammers, who I think is here in the back, there he is, great. Um, he's the vice chair, and Nina Froda can't be here, but she is also very involved in the community. Uh, community garden, we, and, uh, that's it, three, three commissioners. We're also supported by able village staff, Cory Monica, Serna, our public works director, Jeff Moussey, who is our staff liaison. We also have a chance to work with the people we normally don't come into contact with, you know, Robert Waring and Don Kirk, our forestry supervisor in general, superintendent, and I want to tell you, these folks are experienced uh, in managing trees, they do a great job, they have some amazing tools. Um, they go to some exotic levels to try to manage these trees, including going up on the cherry pear and um, you know, trying to cut things. And the other thing, uh, I had a chance to watch them um, do some work the other day, and not only did they take down the, the, uh, offending branches and dead branches, but they cleaned up so well afterwards, and that's just part of the, um, kind of extra thing I, I like about this community. Well, let's talk for a moment about our accomplishments since, uh, our birth in two thousand and twenty-three. We updated our approved tree planting list. Um, we want to make sure our trees are very successful, uh, we want to use natives whenever possible. And, uh, try to deal with any, uh, trees that are either especially hard to manage or often are diseased. We also reviewed policies and operations of the public works and forestry division. We needed to understand how they were set up. Get an idea of the equipment they needed, the education they needed, that's important. Uh, we also had a chance to talk to development services and, um, well, we might have tailored, and it was really helpful to see how, um, his division can work with public works and really, uh, manage our tree resource. Um, we have participated in Arbor Day celebrations in the past in conjunction with the district's thirty-five schools. Um, and that's been very helpful to introduce our children to trees and tree protection. Plus, they seem to like the inside, so that's, that's good. We're very proud of our buckthorn removal program. This, uh, is on private property. We've had eighty residents, uh, already respond to this. And producing a hundred and fifty cubic yards of cornstarch, bad stuff, bad, bad form. And, uh, we are going to continue that this spring, and then we'll take it again next fall, I believe. And, uh, it's been great to get started on this invasive species. Um, we also took a look at new development and capital improvements for tree preservation opportunities in the community. Not only in the golf course, but also in our, uh, new subdivision. Okay, and now we'll move on to our goals. Um, so we're going to be updating the tree ordinance language regarding preservation and new development. Um, our staff is received special training of how to better how to avoid damaging our trees during new development or redevelopment on a par, for a parcel of property. Um, we want to do more to provide residents with educational material. We, of course, are going to support the buckthorn removal initiatives, not only on village property, but on private property. Um, and engaging community partners with similar goals. I was so glad to see that we were on the Sustainability Task Force list, that's good, we're going to coordinate with them. But also with other groups, not only the schools, the Friends of the Green Bay Trail, the Park District, um, and some other, um, advisory boards and bodies. You know, you wouldn't think that trees would have a big relation to, uh, um, some of the other, um, elements of the community, but even uh, for, um, things related to mental health. Trees do provide positive reinforcement for those kinds of, uh, efforts. Um, we're going to have the opportunity this next year to support, to support the joint tree nursery with the park district over at Sheldon Park, and we're very excited about that, we're going to be growing our own and, and also uh, hopefully working with the park district of managing our urban forests. And finally, we want to engage the community in the benefit of our tree, trees. And we're going to be having, we're having some, uh, contests and, and some community outreach on that, uh, in the next few, uh, next few months. I want to remind everybody on Arbor Day, which is April twenty-fifth at West School at one-thirty, we're planning a tree. So we'll be looking forward to, uh, anybody who wants to take part in that, uh, watch the kids, uh, uh, plant, plant the tree and, uh, make us a healthier and, uh, better community. I am open to questions.
Any of the trustees have a question? And if you don't, I have. Um, let me say first, thank you for the report, and for the hard work, and for the hard work of the commission. Um, yeah, trees are important. One thing that I think we're trying to we pay the forest preserve a lot of money, uh, in connection with the golf, because we had to take down trees. Um, regardless of how I felt about that, I get the point about trees. And I, one thing I think we want to make sure we do, and I think he may have said this to other members, and I think Mr. Lammers said, pointed this out, we want to be sure we get rights in valuing and making sure that there's construction in town or being used up in town. The, 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 the tax our trees, tax the rent trees, um, with the rent be scheduled. And, you know, if, if, if you have thoughts now, whether that's something that you're going to need, the tree commissioners can work on going forward, so that, uh, we don't inadvertently allow uh, development or construction to take out trees, you know, not do that.
Uh, yeah, we will be, well, we are continuing to look at that, we're doing a survey, I know other communities, uh, some communities charge more than we do, I think we will some do less, some have no regulations at all, and I know, uh, that we're going to be doing a lot of work on that, and, uh, another area that's really recognize the, I'll call it specimen trees or the historic trees in the community. Trying to raise awareness of how important trees are for the community, I know that that's our, I mean, this work plan for the, for the next year. Um, also, a thing that occurs to me is, uh, in, uh, working in conjunction with zoning board, because zoning board can do conditional approvals. And some of the conditional approvals might relate to, uh, tree preservation. So we'll see how that goes in the next year, but yes, that's definitely on your job.
The village board has been able to talk a lot about this, and they certainly would want to. But we want to value trees, to make sure they stay, just to put a higher price. So that if somebody's thinking about doing something, they, I could consider how much they want to pay. Um, so we should be, I think we should look at that. Okay. Thank you for your hard work, for your, uh, fellow issue, uh, which is hard work, like this really important issue, because you're right about trees matter. Um, thank you. Okay, that concludes the reports. Uh, we're going to have, uh, another report for our preservation commission next month. Um, is there any other business for our committee to hold? Uh, or is, if not, is there a adjournment until, uh, you know, our seven o'clock ready, we'll, we'll be.
Listen to it, sir.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, uh, all paid. Both the carings were adjourned, see everybody except.